Commission. Maggie, will you please call rule?
Good evening, Commissioner Hutterly.
Here.
Commissioner Cohen?
Here.
Commissioner Belska?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donohue?
Here.
Commissioner Levy?
Present.
Vice Chairperson Rouser?
Present.
Chairperson Escobar?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Please stand if you are able to at this time to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. My name is Amy Escobar and I am the Chair of the Planning Commission. On behalf of the Commission, welcome to today's meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute all electronic devices, including cell phones that may interrupt the meeting. Our first item on the agenda is public comment. This item is reserved for persons who wish to address the Commission on any matter within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Commission that is not on the agenda. The law does not permit commission, action, or extended discussion of any item not on the agenda except under special circumstances. Members of the public who wish to address the Commission on a non-agendaious item should request to speak at this time by giving a request to speak form to the deputy clerk if you are in chambers or by using the raise hand icon if attending virtually. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
We have no speakers in chambers and no hands in the Zoom room.
Okay. Our next item is our consent calendar, which is item number four. Are there any changes, concerns, a motion to approve the consent calendar from Commissioners?
I have a concern that we only spent 25 minutes at that meeting and I'd like to object. I'll make a motion. We approve the consent calendar.
We have a motion in a second. Clerk, would you please...oh, well, no. Do we have any members of the public that wish to speak on this, on the consent?
We do not.
Okay. Now, would you please call?
Commissioner Hutterly? Commissioner Hutterly, a vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yes.
Commissioner Belska?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donohue?
I approve.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rouser?
I approve.
Commissioner Escobar?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Our next item is number five, which is a public hearing to consider Anna Report Number 24 as required in the 2000 Stanford University General Use Permit, documenting compliance with conditions of approval for reporting period September 1st, 2023 through August 31st, 2024. Owner is Stanford University, zoning is various. It is located in Supervisorial District 5 and is file number PLN 99-7165-2025-Annual Report ID #124932. Does staff have a presentation?
Thank you, Chair Escobar. Lisa McHale, Deputy Director, just want to take a moment and introduce some of the new staff, their first time here at the Planning Commission. This is an annual report that comes before the Planning Commission every year to look at the status of the implementation of the general use permit. And we're also doing some training of some of the staff and expanding the knowledge base around Stanford. So with us this evening, we do have Charu Alawalia, Senior Planner. Many of you have seen her here presenting the annual report. And we also have accompanied with her this evening David Horowitz, Associate Planner, and this evening Bouyan Badbatar, who's going to be providing the presentation to the Commission. And they'll be Assistant Planner for the Department, and they'll be present to answer any questions of the Commission. Thank you. Go ahead, Bouyan.
Good evening, Chairperson Escobar and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Bouyan Badbatar, Assistant Planner, and I'll be providing a brief presentation on the Stanford Annual Report 24. Starting with some background, on December 12th, 2000, the County of Santa Clara approved the Stanford University Community Plan and the general use permit. The SCP policies, along with the CUP conditions, provide regulatory framework for all developments on Stanford campus. The 2000 CUP provides a cap for academic and academic support building area, student housing units, parking spaces, childcare, and temporary search spaces, as is detailed in the slide. The purpose of the Stanford Annual Report is to document development activity on Stanford campus and monitor compliance with the required mitigation measures and the conditions of approval. The reporting...the report is presented to the Stanford Community Resource Group and the Planning Commission every year. For Annual Report 24, the reporting period is from September 1st, 2023 till August 31st, 2024. The Annual Report tracks compliance with 108 conditions of approval. The focus of this presentation is on academic square footage, housing, and transportation. Details on remaining condition compliance are available in the Annual Report, which is Attachment A in this item's packet. Since the year 2000 up to the current reporting period, the square footage of cumulative building permits approved in Stanford is approximately 1.82 million square feet, as shown in this graph. As of August 31st, 2024, the CUP square foot remaining for a location is 208,254 square feet. With regards to housing, the total number of campus housing units constructed under the 2000 CUP thus far is 4,428. There was no net new housing units approved during this reporting period. A total of 40 authorized housing units remain available under the housing allowance. Further, as of August 31st, 2024, Stanford has made cumulative and lieu affordable housing fee payments totaling approximately 43.5 million. An affordable housing square footage bank has also been maintained by the county since 2000. This is for demolition or conversion of projects that remove buildings from the 2000, from the CUP allocation. Instead of paying in lieu fee, Stanford has the option to use the banked square footage or the credited square footage. In this reporting period, the Stanford paid in lieu fees for two projects totaling 4.2 million and used 130,432 square footage from the square footage bank. With regards to traffic monitoring, baseline traffic count to determine the existing level of commute trips entering the campus during the morning peak commute period and leaving the campus during the evening peak commute period was established in 2001. The baseline is the raw traffic volumes adjusted for hospital parking and cut to traffic. For this reporting period, six weeks of data was collected in the spring and two weeks of data in the fall. The 2024 Traffic Monitoring Report concluded that the adjusted morning inbound count was 540 vehicles lower than the baseline 2001 a.m. count, and the afternoon outbound count was 427 vehicles below than the 2001 baseline. Therefore, Stanford was in compliance with the CUP's known at new trips requirement in 2024. In conclusion, Stanford's 24th Annual Report demonstrates compliance with the conditions of approval stipulated in the 2000 CUP. This concludes my presentation. Staff is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff on this item? Commissioner Hutterly?
Yeah, can you explain why there was...why it was a six-week count period in the spring and a two-week count period in the fall?
Through the Chair, this is Charu Alawalia, Senior Planner, Stanford Program Manager. So this is a methodology that has been set since the beginning of the CUP, and it's been implemented since 2001. The counts are taken each year. There's six weeks in spring and two weeks in fall, as set by the methodology. Since the beginning, it was only during the pandemic there was a break because campus was closed for several, several months, in fact, more than a year. So we had to, in some cases, swap over the count collection, but this is how we've been through the mitigation monitoring, tracking, traffic monitoring compliance. Yeah.
Just as a follow-up question, does staff keep a...I would love to see an overtime tracking of the trip counts from year to year so we can see what, what the trends are. Is that something that you all have, that you do by habit or have available, or is it something that would need additional work?
Yes. So Attachment B of the packet is the detailed traffic monitoring report. We don't have a visual graphic showing the trends, but the trip counts for each year, starting from 2001, are accounted for and detailed in that report. So this is Attachment B of the packet.
Thank you.
But if you would prefer to see a visual, we can definitely incorporate that into, you know, our presentation for next year. Yeah.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. Let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anybody here wish to speak? The applicant, anyone?
Yes, we have one speaker in chambers, Ramya Subramanian from Stanford. And did you...the amount of time you would like to give?
She can have 10 minutes if she'd like.
Thank you so much. Good evening. My name is Ramya Subramanian. I am Senior Planner with the Land Use Planning Group at Stanford. I'm joined by Dinah Odell.
but the trip counts for each year, starting from 2001, are accounted for and detailed in that report. So this is Attachment B of the packet.
Thank you.
But if you would prefer to see a visual, we can definitely incorporate that into, you know, our presentation for next year. Yeah.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anybody here wish to speak? The applicant, anyone, anyone?
Yes, we have one speaker in chambers, Ramya Subramanian from Stanford. And did you, the amount of time you would like to give?
She can have 10 minutes if she'd like.
Thank you so much. Good evening. My name is Ramya Subramanian. I am Senior Planner with the Land Use Planning Group at Stanford. I'm joined by Dinah Odell at this hearing. I want to thank the county first of all for the presentation and for their time and effort in preparation of the 24th Annual Report. We are also grateful to Stanford staff that helped in providing data and support that is needed for preparation of this annual report. I'll now briefly share a few highlights from the report. In this reporting cycle, roadway improvement projects along Jane-Stanford Way, Sarah Street, and Santa Teresa received approval. These upgrades will assist the university in continuing to enhance its roadway infrastructure to improve traffic circulation and ensure safety of our community. Another key project that came about is the bridge building that completed last year. This is the new Computation and Data Science Building, often referred to as CODA by our student, students. It's definitely become one of our most popular buildings of late. We are really grateful to our construction project managers and county staff that has together helped us get this project to the finish line. On the transportation side, we saw a 21% increase in Marguerite Shuttle ridership this year, and our programs continue to do well. The university also has made steady progress towards meeting its sustainability goals. Finally, I'd like to thank the Planning Commissioners for their review of the 24th Annual Report. We're happy to provide any responses if there are any questions for us. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Levy?
Are there any plans for updating the GUP? There's only 40 housing units left, 1% of the housing units. And so what are some of the future plans?
Right, so it's been almost a year since the new Stanford University President took office. And this is a topic that has been discussed with him and several other leaders within the university. There has been a group that has been formed internally to take a look at the logistics and what the timing could be of the new general use permit application. The earliest we anticipate the new general use permit application going in would be summer of next year, just summer of 2026. And we hope to keep county planning and our community posted as more details around this evolve.
All right, a question on the housing fee square footage bank. If I remember correctly, last year we came to the conclusion that all new housing was going to be built on Stanford property. And so is this, so in the future, this is, this is sort of a remnant of the past, isn't it? And in the future, all housing is going to be on Stanford property?
I believe the policies of the updated Stanford Community Plan are in that direction. The general, the 2000 general use permit regulatory framework, however, still allows us to use the square footage bank and pay in lieu fees. So I think as of now, since we are operating under the 2000 general use permit, that's, that's why the annual report still continues to state what it does.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners? No, okay. Do we have any speakers on this item?
We have no additional speakers.
Okay. Is there any additional comments from staff? No, okay. Well, with that, I will close the public hearing. Is there any discussion, a motion amongst commissioners? Okay, I will make a motion to accept Annual Report number 24.
Second.
Thank you Commissioner Cohen. And Madam Clerk, if you wouldn't mind calling for the vote.
Commissioner Hutterly?
Yes.
Commissioner Cohen?
Yes.
Commissioner Balska?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donohue?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Rousher?
Yes, and that was a very good presentation. I thank you guys.
And Chairperson Escobar?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number six is a public hearing to consider a concurrent land use application consisting of grading approval and major modification of a use permit and architecture and site approval for expansion of the existing Thousand Trails Recreational Vehicle or RV Park. The proposed expansion consists of 44 recreational vehicle spaces that will allow a maximum stay of 30 days. No changes to the number of employees or other operational parameters are proposed. Associated development and onsite improvements include a 1,401 square foot bathroom, interior roads drainage improvements, a bioretention pond, new landscaping and fencing. Let's see. California Environmental SEQA Act mitigated negative declaration. The owner is MHC Property Management LP. Applicant is Amanda Musi Verdel Hannah Brunetti. Property location is 12411 Merriman Lane in Gilroy. APN number 756-43024. Zoning is RR-5AC-SR. It is located in Supervisory District 1, excuse me, and is file number PLN 21-032 and is ID number 125092. Does staff have a presentation?
Yes, Chairperson Escobar, members of the commission. My name is Principal Planner Rob Salisbury, presenting the project on behalf of Senior Planner Eunice Ban. And I do have a brief presentation for you. So as Chairperson Escobar mentioned...
Just gonna pause real quick, we're not presenting yet.
Yes, I need to share my presentation, excuse me.
Just one technical pause.
Okay, very good. Thank you Peggy. So as was mentioned by Chairperson Escobar, the project in front of us is a grading approval and major modification of a use permit and architectural insight approval, the expansion of the existing Thousand Trails RV Park. The project is located at 12411 Merriman Lane, Gilroy, and the file number is PLN 21032. So the property is located north of Merriman Lane and west of Uves Creek and is directly south of the existing Thousand Trails RV Park. The general plan designation of the property is rural residential. The zoning of the property is RR-5AC-SR. RR stands for rural residential, the -5AC is a lot size combining district, and -SR is the scenic road combining district. Surrounding uses are the Thousand Trails RV Park to the north and then some residential development to the south, and then some open space to the west. So this slide shows the proposed layout. The project proposes 44 additional RV sites, approximately 1,400 square foot bathroom building, 48 parking spaces, two of which are accessible. And then there are some onsite improvements, including interior roadways, bioretention basins, landscaping, fencing, outdoor lighting. Collectively, the grading consists of approximately 2,319 cubic yards of cut and 1,966 cubic yards of fill. I would like to note that there is a typo in the staff report. It includes an older number for cut and fill quantities. The project was revised relatively recently to provide some additional bioretention basins required under the county's NPDs permit. And that's, that's the reason for the change in grading quantities. But as currently proposed, the grading quantities here of, shown on the slide, of 2,319.89 cubic yards of cut, 1,966.04 cubic yards of fill, are what is proposed for the project. So this slide shows a layout of the existing RV Park and then the expansion area. It's basically a small extension to the south of the existing property. There's going to be a lot merger to combine the two legal lots. The expansion area is going to utilize the sewer, water, power, and road access from the existing RV Park. No new employees are proposed. There are currently 16 employees that support the existing RV Park and those same number of employees will support the expansion area as well. And the expansion area will utilize all the amenities of the existing RV Park, which is described more fully in the staff report. The expansion areas are proposed to have a maximum stay of 30 days, which is distinct from the existing RV Park that has a percentage of RV stays that is outlined more fully in the conditions of approval. The required findings for the use permit ASA and the grading approval can be made. The use is allowed in the zoning district pursuant to the zoning ordinance that was in place at the time the project was deemed complete. The project also complies with county general plan policies and it complies with ordinance codes for drainage, parking, traffic, and fire safety. The grading is minimally necessary to establish the use. It generally conforms with a natural terrain and utilizes an existing flat area on the property. And the grading is contained on site and will not endanger public or private property. There was a mitigated negative declaration prepared for the project, which was circulated for 20 days. It included mitigation measures for air quality, biology, cultural resources, noise. And as of right now, we have not received any comments from the public on the initial study. I would like to point out to the commission that we did provide a revised initial study to the commission. There was a couple of areas in the initial study that incorrectly noted which regional water caller control board area the project was located in. So that has been revised. In the, in your packet, we provided a revised initial study. But the notice of intent and the MMRP did not change. So we did not provide you with replacements for those items. But to make it easier on the commission, if you ultimately would like to, you can approve revised Attachment B, which consists of the NOI, the MMRP, and the revised mitigated negative declaration. So with all this being said, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the revised mitigated negative declaration, make the required SEQA findings, and adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and grant the concurrent land use application consisting of grading approval and major modification of a use permit with architectural insight approval, subject to the revised conditions of approval. And just to briefly explain to the commission, there were three conditions of approval that were initially included in the packet. Based on the revisions to the plans, those conditions are no longer needed and hence why they've been deleted from the revised conditions. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Are there any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Balska?
Yes, thank you. Can you elaborate a little bit more about why those conditions are no longer needed?
Sure, so let me, let me bring up the packet so I can make sure I speak to them. Give me just one second if you would.
We may not need, do we need to share still, Mr. Salisbury? Or are you bringing it up for your own clarification?
No, I don't think I need to share anymore. Thank you.
And while Mr. Salisbury is bringing that information up through the chair, just to clarify, prior to the meeting, the revised Attachment B is, is in your packet online, not necessarily your full packet in front of you.
So original condition number 51 was deleted. The required fire access standard is a 20-foot wide drivable surface, which is proposed under the project. And condition 51 mentioned required conformance to a standard detail that was not necessary for the project. Condition 52 was deleted because initially the project was proposing some development within the flood hazard area. But the project was revised such that there is no development within that area. So that condition was deleted. And similarly for 53, because there is no development proposed within the flood hazard area, the no rise certificate and the no adverse impact certificate is not necessary. So those are the three deletions of conditions of approval.
Thank you, that clarifies it for me. I have a couple more questions, but you can circle back to me if you want to let others...
No, go ahead and finish your questions.
All right. Can you clarify the 48 parking spaces? Where are those located? Are those the RV parking spaces or are there additional vehicle parking spaces?
So there, there are 44 parking spaces directly adjacent to the RV parking spaces. If you look on the, on the site plan that was included with the packet, you'll see larger RV spaces and then just next to them, vehicle parking spaces. And then there's also four additional parking spaces located in close proximity to the proposed restroom facility. And actually, I can bring that up here and show you what I'm referring to.
Yeah, you're, if you're referring to those like little boxes that are sort of in and off to the side, they're not adjacent to the actual roadway. So the vehicle would have to pull in first? Yeah, if you can bring up the, the drawing, that would, that would kind of help. I thought that was just like a little, I don't know, barbecue area for the RVs or something. But if those are the parking...
And through the chair, I know the applicant is also here and may be available to answer more of the logistical questions on that. But Mr. Salisbury will go ahead and bring up the plan and illustrate our understanding at the department.
Yeah, so as you can see on the slide, yes, those parking areas directly off to the side of the RV sites are the parking spaces. Those are, those are designed for the people with RVs who sometimes bring a vehicle with them so they can park there. And then there are also, as I mentioned, four parking spaces directly to the north of the proposed bathroom building.
Okay, I guess my confusion is if you have an RV parked in the RV spot, how do you then pull the car out, which now appears to be blocked in by the RV?
There's no, there's not necessarily any issue with somebody driving around the RV to get to the driveway.
Okay.
So they're, they're still going to be accessible if people, if the residents wish to utilize them.
Okay. And then my last question is the, this project was deemed approved, sorry, deemed, deemed complete in April of 2021. That's, we're now in 2025. Can you, can you elaborate what, what the delay has been? Because that seems like an awfully long time for what seems like a very straightforward project.
Sure, I can try to. The project has been redesigned a couple of times since it was initially deemed complete. Initially, the project was proposing to develop closer to Uves Creek, which would have required a setback exception from the Habitat Agency, which had it been a component of the project, also would have needed approval from the Planning Commission. And so the applicant elected to revise the project to not have to request a setback exception. That took a little bit of time. There was also some staffing changes at the department and then of later revisions to the project to include some needed bioretention basins. So it has certainly taken a long time, longer than we would wish, but those were the reasons for the delay.
Okay, thank you. I have no more questions. I have no more questions.
Any other questions from commissioners? Oh, sorry. Commissioner Levy.
Just a follow-up to Commissioner Belzka's question. When I look at this site plan, it appears as if the entire area where we have the parking is hardscaped. Is that the case? And is that why it's so easy to drive in and out? Yeah, you just leave up the same graph, the same site plan you had? There we go. And if not, what landscaping is there on that?
So landscaping is primarily on the perimeter of the project site. The roadway is going to be paved and the RV sites themselves are crushed gravel. And then the interstitial spaces, I believe, are possibly also going to be crushed gravel, but perhaps.
It's all going to be DG, the whole thing?
Excuse me?
Okay, it's all going to be crushed gravel, DG?
Correct.
Okay. And so it's permeable, though?
It is permeable, yes.
Right. I was going to wait till after the applicant to ask another question, but I had a question about what the landscaping and the removal of the trees, 23 trees, and they're being replaced. And it looks like they're being replaced by Brisbane box, a box tree, which is an Australian native. Why are we being replaced with Australian native and not a local native?
So 28 trees was required under the initial plan, but under the current plan, it's only a single native-sized ordinance tree that's being removed. So typically, there is a requirement that native trees be replanted like for like. In this case, you know, if the commission would like to, request that the applicant select native species instead, of course, the commission may do so.
All right. Okay, and you're saying the redesign only takes out a single native tree, where I wrote down my notes and maybe it's changed since then, but there is the removal of 23 trees and .29 acres of oak woodland. If you go to, and I was going, like I said, I was going to do this after the applicant, but if you go to page, I think it's 125, or let me go here, make sure I got the right page for you. Page 24 on the mitigated negative deck. And there's a site plan that's an overlay over a map. It's on page 125 of the original document. It's on page 24 of the mitigated negative deck.
Yeah, that was.
If you can bring that up on the screen, that'd be great.
Okay, I will be happy to do that.
So I can talk to it?
Yes.
And based on what I'm seeing on the revised document, it is pretty much the same. We've got that, Rob, page 24, the MDM and mitigated negative deck and 125 of the packet. Figure seven, habitat plan, land cover.
the project would include removal of 23?
I wanted to talk to the diagram itself.
The figure.
The figure. So it is identified as figure seven in the mitigated negative deck. I think everybody, there we go. All right. So if you look on the lower left-hand side, you can see underneath the layout where the tree line actually resides. And it resides a pretty much parallel to where the road is. And so my assumption is that is where a number of the trees are going to be removed. So you can see the road line on the lower left-hand side. If you look underneath it, you can see exactly, that's pretty much where the tree line lies. So it looks to me as if that piece of the proposal is going and removing the repairing corridor, that component of the repairing corridor. Is that correct?
No, my understanding is that it was the original expansion in close proximity to Uves Creek that was triggering the tree removal?
Yes, on the upper side.
On the other side.
So, but the oak woodland on the lower left-hand side. So it sort of looks like there'd be a creek in that woodland, but maybe there's not.
Yeah, the creek is on the opposite side.
Right. So, but it's removing a component of the oak woodland in there, right? And so that is where the trees are being removed?
I'm sorry, could you?
So this appeared, just from a visual here, this appears to be where the trees would be removed.
And again, you're talking about the?
The lower left-hand side.
Yeah, again, my understanding is that is not where the tree removal, the single tree is being removed, but perhaps the engineer could clarify?
Yeah, but that's, yeah. Just based on the visual here, that appears to be the case, so what I'm seeing and what I'm hearing are two different things.
Through the chair, there are some other figures that might provide a little bit more clear of a distinction in the set of plans. It appears there are some shadows that are underneath as well that might be creating some confusion when we do an overlay with the color coding here, but in the set of plans, it looks like the roadways and the RV parking areas are not impacting some trees, but I would defer to the applicant for that clarification.
Yes, okay, that's fine.
Okay.
They shared their presentation, and it actually has some pretty good detail on that, so if we can just hold.
Sounds good. Thank you. I'll wait for the applicant's presentation for any further questions.
Commissioner Donahue, you had your light on. Do you have a question or?
I turned it off.
Okay, just checking. Okay, with that, let's go ahead and open the public hearing.
I have a couple of questions.
Is it relevant to ask it of staff or to wait for the applicant, given kind of where we've already gone?
I don't know.
Because the applicant is coming next.
I have no idea who is the right audience. I have questions about the lighting layout and about one of the mitigation measures.
Okay, would you mind holding it and let's have the applicant speak just in case he answers one out of two and then we'll circle back to staff?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, with that, let's go ahead and open the public hearing, and if we could have the applicant, who I suspect is present, come forward to speak. 10 minutes, Peggy?
Yes, we have Amanda Musi-Birdell, who is going to screen share her presentation. And we also have Mike Sukle.
Yes.
From Equity Lifestyle Properties. So combined, 10 minutes.
Did it work? All right, I did it.
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Amanda Musi-Birdell with Hannah Burnettti. I am here to represent Thousand Trails. Mike is a representative of ELS, Thousand Trails. I just want to say, big thanks to Rob Salisbury. The last hearing, I was before you, I said, "Big thanks to Laura," because she took it to the finish line, and Rob just did the same thing. Eunice, who was our planner, went on maternity leave right when we were getting ready to come to see you guys, so I appreciate him taking it on and getting it to the end. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Mike for some background on the facility, and I'll go into the expansion.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Mike Sukle, I'm with Equity Lifestyle Properties. Equity Lifestyle Properties is the owner of Thousand Trails. It's a network of campgrounds across the country, which we manage Morgan Hill RV Resort. We're the leading owner and operator of manufactured home communities and RV resorts across the country. 2025, we were named America's, one of America's most responsible companies by Newsweek. On TripAdvisor, our average third-party review score is 4.09, a score very high. This year, we had 12 Hall of Fame dukties and 55 Traveler's Choice Awards. Rob mentioned a little bit about this, but Morgan Hill RV Resort is a 317-site RV resort on County Highway G8 near the junction of Watsonville Road and Uves Road. It's situated, the park itself is situated on 50 acres of mature trees along the banks of Uves Creek. We've got amenities on the property that include a clubhouse, swimming pool, playground, pickleball court, abachi court, mini golf, dog park, and many other things for our visitors to enjoy. We also run events and activities and children's programs, arts and crafts, and theme weekend events to ensure family fun for all. Our customer profile, the resort is open to Thousand Trails members and also non-members alike, so the public can come in and rent an RV space. The guests of Morgan Hill are RV resorts, are vacationers, and they're not residents on the property. We only allow short-term stays, even for Thousand Trails members. We comply fully with the county's length-of-stay restrictions, with the additional restriction that no one can stay more than 270 days per year. I know our conditions, in our conditions and the planning packet, it says we have 10% that are 360 days a year, and those are reserved for employees of the park. The average length of stay for our guests is seven nights. And then I just included some customer reviews to show you a little bit about the experience and how much our customers enjoy coming to the resort. With that, I'll turn it over to Amanda, she can speak to a little more of the technical aspects of the project.
Do you want to read those, or should I just? Okay, everyone loves it. So outlined in red is the existing RV park. The little kind of panhandle is the existing entrance, and that would be off of Uves Road. It has 317 sites, 10 are cabin sites, 31 are tent sites. As you could see from the slide, the existing development preserves trees, it's respectful of Uves Creek, and maintains a rural setting. The expansion area that's outlined in blue is about seven acres, and in the middle of it is mainly a grass area with trees around all the borders. As Rob mentioned, if the project's approved, we would merge the two lots together, making it one large park. We're proposing 44 stalls. Each of the 44 sites will have individual water, sewer, and electrical hookups. The sites will all be accessed off of Uves Road, and Merriman will only be used for emergency purposes, and that's true emergency purposes. It will be locked with an OX box for most of the time. There's, the new development site plan will preserve two acres of area along Uves Creek. The existing trees will be protected during construction, except for the one ordinance-sized tree that will be removed, which will be shown in a later slide. And the landscaping will provide extra screening with a fence along the southern property line to provide more privacy with our most impacted neighbor. Sorry, it's a little bit cumbersome. And here's the layout of the site. The development will occur, it's kind of hard because of the shadows, but the development will occur in the middle where it's mainly a grassy area. There's ample buffer to Uves Creek with a small bath house is the only building that's going to be constructed on the property. There is minimal grading. I do have to say that it kind of looks like a lot of grading quantities, but that's because we have to build in bio retention ponds, which are like five feet deep, and so they, I mean, the cut is five feet deep, but then you backfill it with plants and everything, and it looks great, but it makes your grading quantities really high. And those three bio retention ponds are along the south, the middle, and the top of the proposed expansion. As Rob mentioned, the roads are asphalt, but the stalls will be base rock, and in between the stalls will be DG. And this is, so in between some site plan changes, we got new planners, and so I think that's why there's, you know, good questions that you had. You could see on our left is our first semittal inn, which had 57 sites and 5.2 acres that we were proposing to develop. And then on the right is our current proposal with 44 stalls and four acres developed. And so it basically shrunk both the sites and the developed area by about 20%. And then, yeah, thanks. And then, oh, that's it, that's it. And it also pulled back from Uves Creek from, it's hard to see on the screen, but from the blue line to the green line, which is about 75 more feet from Uves Creek. And that was the area that the 23 trees were in, and now we're not taking those 23 trees For the proposed landscaping, there's existing oak trees surrounding the property, except for the meadow in the middle. We are proposing a row of trees for extra screening along our southern neighbor, a good neighbor fence for privacy along that property line. We did meet with that neighbor, Mr. Toomes, and he was agreeable to the fence type that we propose, that's up in the right-hand corner. And also to note that the landscaping plans do not propose fencing along the east and west corridors, so that allows wildlife to go from the hillside to the creek and the creek to the hillside. And, yeah, and there's our one tree that's going to be removed. There's a lot of shadows in these pictures, but this is the RVS report, and so the little dots are indicating ordinance-sized trees that are on the property. And so the one that's highlighted in red is the one that we're going to remove. That is an oak tree. The landscape plans show replacement of that oak tree with four oak trees, which is more than the ordinance requires. And here's our riparian site plan, and that's, we're showing that how much we're pulled back from the creek, which is over 25 feet, or sorry, 250 feet from the creek itself, and then 85 feet from the riparian area, so we're pretty much in the middle of that meadow. And you could see the development on either side is closer to the creek than we're proposing for our site. And these are the beautiful amenities that are existing at the park that these RVers get to enjoy. It is a beautiful site. I don't know if anyone's been there. It's very quiet and pristine, and I am glad that people in the area get to enjoy this. And I mean, I talk about with my family, like you have to book something on the weekend six months in advance in order to stay someplace that is in the middle of nature. So I'm hoping that this could get approved so more people can enjoy the nature in this beautiful area. If you have any further questions, I can't believe I took 10 minutes, sorry.
It's okay. One second, Commissioner Rousier. Commissioner Levy, does that satisfy your question on the trees?
Well, it satisfies the question. I was really happy to see the setback from the riparian corridor. The only question I still have is regarding the use of natives rather than Australian trees.
We would be 100% open to use of natives rather than non-native species.
Okay, we are going to go Commissioner Hutterly, Commissioner Rousier after. And Commissioner Cohen, the light on, does that relate to Hutterly and not you? Okay, so you're not in the queue. And then after that, we'll do. So Hutterly, Rousier, Belzka. Okay, go.
Great. My first question, and you're definitely the right people to ask it of, so thank you to the chair. I'm looking at your light schematics, where you have the lighting, your pole lighting, and you have some wall lighting. It's on page It's on page 226 of the packet. And I know, I see that you have downlighting for, for all the lights. I am a little concerned still about the light impacts, especially on the riparian corridor, despite, I appreciate the setback as well, but light at night does have substantial impacts on the wildlife there. I'm wondering if you gave any consideration or would be willing to consider having those lights on that edge of the property be motion sensor lights or on some kind of timer so that they're not on after 10:00 PM or midnight or, or a certain time?
Yes, we would be open to that on that end of the corridor. The other, the downlighting and drop lighting is on the existing park side of the restroom. We're meeting all the dark sky compliance regulations to keep that from going off property, but you brought up a good point about the wildlife, so we would be open to putting those on a timer or a motion sensor. I think a timer would be better, because the motion sensor would pick up the animals.
Yeah, that would be fantastic. I appreciate that. My other question is possibly for staff. This one is where I wasn't sure who's the right person. It's about mitigation measure 23.
If you could reserve your question for staff until the applicant is finished?
Yep.
We'll get back to staff where you can ask those questions.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Rousier.
I'd just like to inform everyone that I had to ex parte communication, and I visited the site. And years ago, I, our family enjoyed the site. And I was wondering if you could just briefly describe what I saw yesterday as far as your septic system and how you've improved that, because I was very actually impressed by it.
Sure. Yeah, we have just completed construction of a new wastewater treatment system. It's produced by, or manufactured by BDP. The system is contained in two shipping containers. One is for settlement of solids, the other one is for aeration of the effluent. What it does, it removes nitrogen to a higher level than most treatment systems. So currently, the site, or the site was on, is still on septic. We're in the process of commissioning the plant and making that changeover, but we're going to be putting a way higher quality of water into the ground than we have been in the past, so we're really excited about that.
Yes, I, I just, when I went there, I just sensed that these people are, care about the environment and are really trying their best to have the least amount of impact. And I've heard nothing but good things from people who have stayed there, and, and just being in part of that county, I appreciate the service that they provide, so I will be voting in favor of this.
Commissioner Balska, do you have questions still of the applicant?
The removal of the one ordinance tree, does, does that mean there's removal of non-ordinance trees as well?
Yeah, there's like a pepper tree. Let's see if I could. So, and there's like two trees in the upper-left kind of, that are a little bit in the orchard or meadow. That's a pepper tree and something.
So how many trees total are getting removed, ordinance and non-ordinance?
That would be three.
Three, okay. And then, is there a reason why the area in between the parking sites is DG as opposed to landscaping or green area?
Thank you. I forgot you asked that question, so thank you for, generally, people back their RVs up into, like, if it's a trailer, they back their RVs up, so they park in tandem. So you're, you take your RV, you back it up, so your RV's behind you and your, your car's in front. And then that area that is the kind of the triangle of, I don't, I mean, not triangle, the rectangle that's further up, that's like where you have your picnic.
Okay.
Did I answer?
That answered my previous question. I appreciate that, thank you, because that actually makes a lot more sense. But then the area in, the area in between all of that, I think you said that was just DG. I mean, is there a reason why that's not like actually landscaped with, I don't know, grass or shrubs?
Well, it's, our thought was it was reduced water usage and easier, easier to maintain. There's landscaping primarily along the north and the south edges of the property, and then also in the center around the bathroom, there'll be additional landscaping, and then along that bioswale that runs down the center of the sites.
And no trees planned in between the RV sites?
We do, we are adding trees, but not in between the sites.
Okay. Okay. I think that was it, come on.
Commissioner Levy.
Yeah, I think my question was just answered, and I was looking at the bioswale and wondering what kind of landscaping was going to be doing, done along the bioswale. So there's at least some green in there, right? And maybe there's an opportunity for trees, I'm not sure.
Yeah, in the bioswale, there's only certain materials that are plant, plant list that is available. We could look into, so there are more shrubs and grasses and stuff like that that go in the bioswale.
We have bioswales along sidewalks in parking lots, et cetera, and they're often landscaped with some type of plant, so.
Yeah, yeah, so it'll be.
We plan on.
They look good.
You will have it look good.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are there any, I'm sorry, are there any members of the public who wish to speak?
We have no speakers in chambers. We do have one speaker in the Zoom room, Sharon Luna. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking. You will have two minutes. And your mic should be open, Ms. Luna.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Sharon Luna, and I'm with the San Martin Neighborhood Association, and I received information in regard to this project, that it was going to be reviewed. And I too have been to the Thousand Trails Recreation Vehicle Park, and it is beautiful. However, there are some concerns that I just want to address, and it may be the location that it was originally at was 12895 Uves Road, and then I noticed that there was movement to another address. And then in trying to find out if it was in Morgan Hill on the planning website, couldn't find it, and went to PAS Projects, then went to Gilroy and found it there. What was interesting is, because I had been involved in this project with Pat Toomes, and there were quite a few concerns, so I'm glad to see that there is reconciliation with that. But on April 1st, 2022, a letter came out from Jacqueline Oshana in regard to that there would be a lot of time for the public to provide input on the application. And I have not, or anyone else on SMNA has seen that information, so I'm really concerned as far as when the public was able to address this project. My other concern is when you're talking about the waste, is the waste going to the Gilroy location, waste station, so that we, we know exactly where everything is? Thank you very much.
And that concludes our speakers.
I would just like to ask a question of staff really quick. If you have the information available handily right now, would you be able to, at least, just so we have it on record, how, how many square feet out you noticed that sort of, anything related to the noticing for the project, just so we have it on record that it, it did occur, and all that happened, just to kind of address that latter part of the comment?
Yes, I'd be happy to answer that question. Yes, we did noticing it multiple times for this project. We did noticing for the, for the initial study, and then noticing for the hearing. And our requirement for noticing is that we provide notice to all property owners within 300 feet of the perimeter, and we also have to capture a minimum number of 24 distinct properties within that noticing, within that 300-foot radius. And then we extend the radius further as required in order to hit a minimum number of 24 different addresses.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Do you have any additional comments, anything else you'd like to add before I have Commissioners ask additional questions of you?
Not at this time, thank you though.
All right. All right, Commissioners, additional questions of staff? Commissioner Hutterly.
I have a question about mitigation measure bio-2. It's number 23 on the Attachment A conditions of approval, about special status fish habitat protection. The first bullet talks about the construction contractor developing and implementing a spill prevention, control, and countermeasure plan to minimize the potential effects, potential for and effects from spills and whatnot. My question is, what is the oversight mechanism for that? Is there anyone looking at that plan to deem it sufficient? Is there any, you know, what is the oversight process?
Yeah, plans like that are required to be submitted to the planning office, and then often, we will also consult with other county experts. In the case of the spill prevention program, we'll be consulting with Department of Environmental Health hazmat division and getting their input to make sure that that plan is sufficient.
I'm sorry, do they need to then get that approval before proceeding?
I don't know that I would call it a formal approval, but we will have to sign off on the plan and accept the plan before the project can move to the appropriate stage. And the timing for this one is prior to any construction activities. So before we will issue the grading permit, they're going to need to submit and receive our blessing for that, that plan.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Levy.
Yeah, I think we are on the same page on making sure things are done correctly as far as, you know, some oversight. And my question is, who hires the biologists of the pre-construction survey?
The applicant hires the biologist, but they are required to use a qualified biologist.
Okay, and that's not considered a conflict of interest?
No. You know, a qualified biologist is going, in our, in our opinion and in our experience, is going to do their job as they're required to do regardless of who pays them.
Okay, I'd love to see that changed where we do the hiring on that, but they pay for it. But if that's the way the rules are, that's, that's the rules.
If I could just expand on my answer through, through the chair. First, we do have that practice in place for certain types of biology reports. So for example, for any biology report that was produced in, as part of this initial study, and the initial study for, for those types of projects, we do require that the applicant provide the money to us. We contract directly with the biologist, but for mitigation measures, we typically allow the applicant to hire their, their own biologist.
Sure.
But we, of course, review the surveys and make sure that they're, they're adequate, and if necessary, peer review them.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much.
Commissioner Hutterly.
Yeah, just a follow-up question about the biologist. Does the county have a definition of what is a qualified biologist, or does that vary from role to role? The reason I ask is, especially for these mitigations about the special status species, you would want to make sure that the qualified biologist is qualified with the behavior and habitat of those particular species.
Yeah, there are state-level certifications, and we actually also have an approved list of, of biologists that are qualified, and so we require that applicants select a biologist from our approved list.
Commissioner Rousier.
If, if we're ready, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the SEQA mitigated NECD, make the required SEQA findings, and adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and we grant the concurrent land use application consisting of grading approval and major modifications of a use permit, and architectural and site approval, subject to the conditions of approval, with two minor changes. One is making sure that the proposed trees are native to California or the area, and the lighting is put on a timer in the new expanded area.
Okay, let me close the public.
Oh, sorry.
I didn't want to interrupt you, you were on a roll. Did you get all that, Peggy? Okay, so we are closing the public hearing, and we are accepting prior to and now after Commissioner Rousier's motion.
I can repeat it if you want.
Elizabeth Visser's lead deputy county council, if I could, could you just clarify if in your motion, you're intending to adopt the revised Attachment B versus the initial Attachment B? Attachment B revised is the revised mitigated negative declaration.
I was just reading literally from there, so I will clarify my motion that we're adopting the revised Appendix B. And just for the record, DG is decomposed granite for those of, there's many people in here that are, speak the language and everything, and not everyone, anyway, sorry.
Okay, I will second your motion. Is there any discussion of the motion on the floor? Commissioner Balska, and then Commissioner Levy.
I just wanted a clarification. The lighting on a timer, you said in the development area? My understanding was that the lighting on the timer was just going to be in the area next to the riparian corridor?
I'd like to speak to that, actually. Yeah, I was going to ask for a clarification on that, too, and the original plan was just on the riparian corridor. I'd like to sort of see it expanded to the other side, to the oak woodland area as well. So the two native areas is where the timers are.
Are you amending his motion? I think that would be proper.
I think we're clarifying the motion, but.
Well, but you're saying you would like it in additional areas, so.
Okay, yes, I have a friendly amendment then to the motion that says that the timed lighting will occur on either side of the development where the, where it has the boundaries with the natural environment, the riparian corridor and the oak woodland.
I will accept that very friendly amendment.
Okay. As I is the seconder of that, is it, you have additional to add?
No, that's it.
Okay.
If I could, through the chair, I apologize. Wanted to make sure that also the intent here is to adopt the revised conditions of approval as being amended.
Now you're pushing it.
Should we restate everything?
Yes.
I think so.
But I may need some help on this, because I'm just trying to read here.
I, to the chair.
Please.
I have it.
You got it.
I have, based upon county council's clarification, which was accepted, that it is the revised Attachment B. And the amendment from Commissioner Levy, we're good.
And Mr. Salisbury clarification that we're talking about revised Attachment A as well, which are the conditions of approval.
Yes, yes.
So I demand revised Attachment A and Attachment B in my motion.
Okay. Please, Madam Clerk, we should call for.
Commissioner Hutterly.
Yes.
Commissioner Cohen.
Yes.
Commissioner Balska.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donoghue.
Yes.
Commissioner Levy.
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Rousier.
I approve.
Chairperson Escobar.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, moving forward, item number seven, receive report from chairperson. I do not have a report. Item number eight, receive reports from Commissioners. Are there any reports from any of my fellow Commissioners? Are there any reports from any of my fellow commissioners? Seeing none, okay. Item number nine, receive report from county council.
I don't have a report, thank you.
Item number 10, receive report from planning commission secretary.
Nothing to respond to on this particular item.
Okay.
Or section.
Item number 11, receive report from deputy director of planning services, Department of Planning and Development.
Sure, thank you, Lisa McCall. So just to give a, a status update on the staffing in the planning section, we're currently, we have six vacancies in the planning section. We did recruit for two senior planner positions. One was a specialized recruitment for agricultural ally specification, and another was a specialized recruitment in the department for planning to focus on updates of our general plan elements. One of those has failed and the other is still in process. We're also looking to hire in additional assistant planners, and the director may have additional feedback on that, but we're currently still aiming for full recruitments in the department for planning. Thank you.
Commissioner Levy.
Yeah, do we have any update on our role on some of these larger builder remedy projects such as Mountain Winery? Particularly Mountain Winery.
So the information that we have available is, we do have a, a website dedicated with questions and answers that have been vetted for the public and, and available for review. That's a great resource. We also have a list that's maintained online, and it's up to date, that provides the status of those projects. And currently, some of them are in review, some of them are pending submittal. But I'm happy to have a conversation offline also if you have any other questions. But that's where our publicly available information is located.
If we were going to have a role in things like the Mountain Winery, which is such a large project?
To the point that there's projects that, that are being reviewed, have an application associated that necessitate planning commission review, they would come before the planning commission.
Okay, that was a nice, I like that nice generic answer. Thank you.
Okay, moving forward, item number 12, receive report from director of Department of Planning and Development.
I'll just speak, thank you, Chair Escobar. I'll just speak briefly. We have a 15-point, well, 16% vacancy currently, not just of planning. We're back at our vacancy rate. Hopefully, we're not going to get to 25%, which we were at one point. We have been actively recruiting, not just in the planning division, but throughout the department. We have a number of candidates that we are reference checking, so we'll see where we, we end up as a department. We are looking at our service delivery model and modifying how we do business. As many of you know, and you were watching the board relative to budget, the county as a whole is just looking at how we are providing services, and that's where the department is as well. We are excited for this opportunity to really align the work that we are offering with the resources that we have. And so it's a great opportunity for us as a team, as a department, to, to really look at how we are providing services, and so that's where we are.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions of our director? No? Okay, moving forward.
Apologies, just a note to the chair that we do not have speakers on items seven through 12.
Thank you. Item number 13, announcements and correspondence, number C, I am acknowledging receipt of correspondence, that is ID number 125313. And with that, we are at item number 15, adjournment. The next regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday, July 24th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. in the Board of Supervisors chamber, 70 West Heading Street in San Jose. Thank you.